Hey Randy, thanks for your advice. It worked out perfect.
Good for you Pete.
I cut that pipe and then I just, I bought a two inch rubber PVC.
I appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
There we go. I think, I think I'm in and I see, I see three people.
Do you see me?
I did. And now I do. Okay.
Are you on a phone?
Yes, I am. Would it be better if I get on my computer?
You'll see more people if you use a larger monitor, but if you always see a phone, use a phone, you'll always see four people at a time.
Okay, gotcha.
The person who's speaking, so yes.
Okay, great, great.
You'll be seeing me the whole time.
I'm sorry?
As I never stop talking, you'll see me the whole time.
It's okay. Talk as you please.
I'm gonna give it a couple more minutes to see if, wait for Mr. Bogo and Ms. Kowski to join.
Okay.
There's Mr. Bogo. Okay, we'll just get started. I called to order the committee of the hall. At 6:32 to discuss the Trex liquor application for $2,900, $29,000, Euclid Avenue. Before we get started with the presentations, anybody have any objections to Mr. Duncan giving a presentation on this as we guys had stated during the council meeting of December 14th?
I object.
I do not. Alright, we're gonna try to get rid of these. Hold on.
Hackers.
Yep.
Yep, all these Zoom admins.
Yeah, I know. I didn't want to let them in, but I never know who they are, so.
I object.
One more.
Alright, I think that's all of them.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Um, does anybody have any objections to a short presentation by Mr. Duncan about his, his business plan?
No.
Okay, then, well, go ahead, Mr. Duncan, if you want, can you give your, your business plan for that, that address, 29000 Euclid Avenue?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And first and foremost, I'd like to thank you for your time and I just want to let you know that I appreciate everything that you guys are doing right now because time is valuable, so I appreciate it. I have been in the, the bar and restaurant business pretty much all of my adult life. My, my parents rented it and, and I decided to get into it also, my wife and I. So that's been about 25 years for myself with family. It's been about 30 years. I currently own two establishments. I had three establishments before the, the COVID situation hit, but I currently have two. One in Warrensville Heights at Emery and Green and another one in Cleveland at 147th Mile. And the location at 147th Mile was our family location. It's been in existence for 30 years. The establishment at Warrensville Heights, although I've been there eight years, it's been around for almost 50 years. So I'm pretty experienced in the. I'm sorry?
That person too. Sandy.
Sorry about that. I can't tell until they come on, so.
Unless Sherry joins, do not let anybody else join this meeting, please.
Okay, perfect.
And Sandy, I'm on with my full name.
I see.
So if you see any other buddy is John, it's not me.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Well, and what I plan to do is, and what I actually do is, I pretty much do cheers. I like neighborhood establishments with neighborhood people, neighborhood family and friends, neighborhood fun. What, what I do is make sure that the people in the community are, are taken care of. Just recently, what we just did is, you know, we, we gave away gift baskets and we gave away dinners and everything to our family and our friends and everybody in their neighborhood that, that frequented the establishment. So what, what I plan to do, my wife and I, is pretty much the same thing is bring cheers to that particular establishment. We plan on bringing, well, it's not a plan, that's what we will do. We plan, you bring jobs and you bring taxes to the community because that's what this is all about. You bring, you bring a facelift to the community, you bring a facelift to the, to the building, you bring a facelift to everyone that wants to be involved in what you do. And that's, that's exactly what I do. My business plan is to make sure that I continue to do exactly what I've been doing for the last 25 years. If there's any specific questions, I definitely accept any specific questions.
Does anybody have any specific questions? Councilwoman Saloto.
See, I told you, I'm always talking. Thank you so much for that. We really appreciate you giving us an overview of your business. You know, I, I come from a family business too and it's important. It's really, it's a cool thing and it's important to the community. So I think that's what we're just really looking at. I mean, do you by any chance, you just do just straight liquor and beer and wine or do you do any kind of food or is it, is it like a bistro kind of or a bar and grill kind of situation?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a bar and grill situation. Yes, 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 definitely bar and food, you know, that good.
You guys have, I mean, just.
We, we, we do good bar food, that's what I call it. We do burgers, Polish boys, corned beef sandwiches, tacos, good, greasy, not the healthiest.
Right, yeah. Okay, great, great.
Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
How you doing? Um, as far as curb appeal to the front, you know, to the, you know, presentation of the building.
Absolutely. Um, well, I would, I want to purchase the building, you know, it's, we're, we're leasing it at first, but I want to do everything I can to make the building look great. During COVID and my two establishments, I remodeled. So I definitely love curb appeal. I love for it to look nice. I love for it to look inviting. You know, I wanted to be a place where people feel comfortable and it looks nice and it looks nice for the community because this is what this is all about. This is about community. It's not just about a book, you know, you can go anywhere and make a buck, but this is about community and people appreciating, a place that they can go to and enjoy themselves, have a good burger, have a, a good drink and, and go home and, you know, and, and relax.
Andy?
Does your other establishment have a Facebook page, sir? I looked at your Slackers page, but Foundations, do they not have a Facebook page?
Yeah, we did have a, a Facebook page. Something happened to it, so, but we're in the process of getting that back up. I, I think it was hacked actually, so I don't know exactly what happened to it, but Stackers page is still up.
Well, on Slackers page, I mean, I, you say bar, bar food. Do Slackers have the same type of menu that you're talking about for the Wickliffe location?
Stackers?
Yeah, the one that you have. Well, there's no like online menu for Slackers to look at, see what type of food you serve.
Oh, and, and that's, that's definitely true, but what, what we do is, it's, it's just, I never put it up to be honest with you simply because the, the neighborhood people know exactly what they're getting when, when, when they come. So I just never put it up there. You know, that's something that I should do, you know, but.
But you serve food at Slackers and Foundations both?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And you know, and, and, and I'm, I'm not here to kid anyone or anything like that, you know, liquor drives the business, but food definitely keeps people there. You know, it's, in, in our actuality is no different from an Applebee's or a Buffalo Wild Wings. It's just that we're neighborhood and we're smaller because without a liquor license, neither one of those establishments would, would drive the way that they do.
Maria?
Oh, I'm not. So I guess, I guess what we're concerned about, you know, Wickliffe, Euclid Avenue in general is important to us and we're really, you know, doing our best to try to upgrade Euclid Avenue. So a lot of the buildings don't look so great and that particular establishment, I mean, has the landlord offered you any promises as to what he might do to the facade, the front facade of the building or does, does, I mean, would he help you with any kind of remodeling or would that be something that you would do even though you don't own the building or?
I definitely, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Did you finish?
I'm just wondering how that would work. I mean, are you planning anything in particular to kind of spruce it up from the outside?
I'm definitely planning on it personally, simply because I want to buy the building. But the, um, the, the representative of the landlord said he would put, he would put money into the building to make sure it comes up to whatever code it needs to come to in order to receive the occupancy permit, but I'm definitely in favor of doing whatever I need to do because, you know, I purchased the building, I want to, you know, put the TLC that it needs into it and, and continue to, to, to grow it and always put money back into the building and make it look nice.
So what is the, I mean, what, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to keep going on this, but what is like the timeline for purchase or I mean, is it going to be, you know, a rent to own kind of situation or is it? I mean, what kind of reason?
Yes, it's, it's leased for a year and then after a year, purchase the building and we could talk about it before the year is up, but that's the understanding right now. The understanding that we have is we'll lease it for a year and then purchase the building from that point.
Okay.
But no matter what, whatever needs to be done, I'm willing to put my money into it because it's going to be my building. So what he could possibly slack on, I'll make sure everything is done.
Okay, alright.
Okay, uh, anybody else have any questions? John, you missed some of this meeting. Unfortunately, you got knocked off, but you have any specific questions?
Oh, I know Sandy was texting me. I cut out maybe five to six minutes ago. Mr. Duncan, I know you mentioned food earlier. I did some more searching around today. I couldn't find any online menus for either location. I actually called Stackers and just to ask about dining or carryout and someone informed me that they don't serve any food, so not sure what the miscommunication there is.
Yeah, I'm not sure who that, who that could have been, but we definitely, there, there's food at Stackers, there's food at Stackers and there's food at Foundations. And are, are we talking to this, am I talking to the same, I'm sorry, I couldn't see because we, we, we talked about the, the menu not being online at Stackers.
Okay, I, I was, I got kicked off the meeting for a few minutes, so I'm not, I'm not sure what was, um, this is John, this is the mayor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I know we spoke on the phone last week, yeah.
Yes, we did, we did. Yeah, definitely. Um, yes, I, I definitely serve food at, at both establishments. Now, I did stop serving for just a little while be, be, because of COVID to just get things back together, but yeah, we, we serve food, but like, like as I discussed, you know, food is not the, the driving force, you know, it's, it's definitely not, it, uh, the, the food keeps people there and it keeps people there because I create a, a family and friends kind of atmosphere, you know, these are, these are places where their, their neighborhood places where guys and, and, and ladies come to have their happy hour drinks and enjoy themselves and enjoy the atmosphere and they have a bite to eat. So, you know.
Everybody knows your name and you're always glad you came.
Yes, yes.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Bogo.
Uh, yeah, are you planning on any kind of entertainment coming into to the facility, bringing in bands or groups or, or stuff like?
Not necessarily, simply because, um, um, I just, I've tried that before and one, it's expensive. Two, um, I just like to, um, to let people kind of socialize in an atmosphere where they play the jukebox. They play pretty much the music that this, that, that's on the jukebox because we filter the jukebox. But, um, you know, just play good music and, you know, and just let people enjoy their, their family and friends, you know, dare to be social with each other and not necessarily listen to a band or any other kind of entertainment.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Any other, Mr. Duncan? Okay. Keep your presentation, Mr. Duncan. This is for the rest of council, I guess. Any injections to the mayor or myself signing or the law director signing that application?
I have none.
None.
Then with a lot of the objections, then we will, uh, we will, either the mayor or I will sign the, the application tomorrow. One of us will be, both of us are going to city hall anyways. So whoever gets there first will sign that application and we'll mark this out of committee, report it out of committee and end this meeting at 6:46.
Welcome to Wickliffe, Mr.
Thank you, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, look forward to meeting everyone.
We'll be, we'll be in.
Excellent, thank you.
Alright, take care.
Bye bye.
Hey, Sandy?
Yes.
The last person is the same icon as, as previously.
Is it? Okay. Yeah, let's get rid of that.
Okay, seven o'clock. I called to order the Wickliffe City Council meeting of December 21st, 2020. Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo.
President.
Your Hardstein.
Here.
Jaworski.
Excused.
Kowski.
Excused.
Levon.
Here.
Sackus.
Here.
Saloto.
Here.
I need, uh, I need a motion to authorize me to abstain from the meeting minutes of December 14th.
Make a motion, second.
Moved by Councilman Garrett Stein, seconded by Councilman Sackus to allow, to allow Council President Levon to abstain from voting on the meeting minutes of December 14th, 2020. Discussion. Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Your Hardstein?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sackus?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, approval of council minutes of December 14th, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve those council minutes.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sackus, seconded by Councilman Bogo to approve the meeting minutes of December 14th as presented. Discussion. Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Your Hardstein?
Yes.
Us. Levon, sorry.
Yes.
Sackus?
Stay, stay.
Oh, that's right, and Saloto.
Here, yes.
Okay, reports and communications from the mayor's safety director.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. My internet connection's a little bit fuzzy, so I'll try to be quick and hopefully it doesn't cut out, but Monica and I had a conversation with Representative from the Cleveland Foundation last Tuesday in regards to, it's a difference, they have different layers, different types of funding. So we actually sent off, after that conversation, after we got a little more detail as to why, you know, the demographics of the city, demographics of the small business owners talked about the impact of COVID, et cetera. The funding is looking a bit better. We sent off a one or two pages, just sort of short story, you could say, about why we're looking for this. And we should know, I think we should know yes or no, like late January, so that could be, that could be great. Now on that topic, Councilman Sackus and I talked a little more after the meeting. He was alluding to last meeting that, you know, similar to our charter review commission where it's in the charter that it should be done every, or that it has to be done every two, 10 years. Yeah, he brought it up, I think it's a great idea as well that we discussed either having an ordinance, I don't know if it makes sense for a charter change, but have an ordinance once we do the master planning or just say, hey, this should be done every 10 years to make sure it is, obviously we're not going to be here in 10 years, but to make sure the next group of folks is, well, I guess council could be, but to make sure the next group of folks, you know, 10 years, 12 years, whatever it is down the road, that, you know, some kind of planning takes place to make sure we're not falling behind. So I don't know if we want to add that to a committee to discuss in January or just work up some legislation, you know, Joe and I can do that and, and bring it to council. Again, thanks to A1 Mr. Limo for bringing Santa into town. If anyone saw that, driving around from, you know, Ridge down Euclid Avenue, that was, that was a nice little event. Took a quick tour of the premier development property this morning. If anyone saw a video on Facebook and LinkedIn, I mean, they did a really nice job cleaning that place up. They've got, you know, some tenants using some small space right now, but they're, they've got conversations with a handful of folks to take, they could fill up that whole back building on Ward Road. Uh, there's still no interest in Euclid Avenue, obviously being all office and admin. They're trying to hold out to rent the building as is before they do any demo or new build, but if nothing happens in the next six months, you know, we could have a clean slate to work with and they could build something new on that site as well. Um, and just, you know, to end the year, obviously with this pandemic, this year has been crazy, but I think looking back, it's been a very good year for Wickliffe overall. We're moving forward. We have a lot of good things going on and we just need to continue to focus on the positive. You know, work together to move the city forward and, and keep pushing forward. So that's all I have. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Back to you.
Any questions or comments for the mayor's safety director? I put the master plan, planning into the committee of the hall, so we can have a discussion on that before we throw out some any kind, any kind of legislation or ordinance resolution. Reports, communications from the director of law.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I do not have any, uh, any additional to report to council tonight. Would like to take this opportunity though to just wish everyone in attendance a safe and happy holiday season.
Any questions or comments for the law director? Thank you, Mr. Zili. Communications from the council president, I have none. Amendments or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, move on to administrators. Police chief vice.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I have to offer this evening is I offered three people jobs as patrolman and all three of them accepted. Hopefully, we're going to have them all sworn in on January 6th. Two of them already had the police academy, they can go right into the FTO program. Third candidate needs to go to the police academy. Which I believe is the reason why Oregon's 2020 and 57 amended is back on the agenda tonight because I needed, the, the police academy is about $5,000. I needed some additional money to send this kid through the academy. And last comment, we did a Phil the Cruiser on Sunday and that was a very successful and I'd like to thank Councilman Hardstein for showing up for that. That's all I've got to have this evening.
Uh, any questions for the police chief? Councilman Garrett Stein.
Uh, chief, how much does it cost the city when we send a candidate to the police academy? We have to pay him when he signed on, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, we pay for the academy and we pay his salary from the time he's in the academy.
And how long is that?
Four months.
So he's at the academy on, so the city has four months salary plus the academy?
Correct.
Alright.
Any further questions or comments for the chief? Councilwoman Saloto.
So I just, and again, I, I'm just a newbie to this whole thing, I guess, but can you explain, like what, what makes you choose a candidate that needs to go through the police academy or do all of them, do we pay for all of them to go to the police academy at some point or do we just hire from other areas? I'm just, I'm just confused as to whether this particular candidate is going and the other two aren't.
So typically how this works is, on the old days, nobody had the police academy and, and whatever city they went to work for, they footed the bill for the academy and also, um, you know, their salary for that time period. Uh, in the old days, you could not go to a police academy unless you were sponsored by a police department, unless you had a job lined up. They changed that probably 15 or 20 years ago, that you can have, you can have open enrollment, so as somebody who's interested to become a policeman can go to the police academy and then try to get a job after they graduate. That is appealing. However, whenever I interview people, I look at the fact that this person is going to be an employee of the city of Wickliffe for 25 to 30 years. And if I can, I try to hire somebody who has a police academy, but I'm looking at the character of the person. So sometimes I find somebody I really like and I have to send them to the academy. So the additional money that we pay for the academy and the salary for that four month period, in my view, is a miniscule amount of money compared with 30 year investment.
Thank you so much. I just didn't know the background to that, so I appreciate you explaining.
Any other questions or comments for the police chief? Thank you, chief vice. Fire chief Powers.
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing to add to my previously submitted report. Happy holidays.
Any questions or comments for the fire chief? Any questions or comments for the fire chief? Thank you, Chief Powers, finance director Dolez.
Thank you, Council President Levon, I do not have a report.
Any questions or comments for the finance director? Thank you, Ms. Dolez, engineer Fermica.
Thank you, Council President, I have nothing to add to my monthly report, just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Any questions or comments for the city engineer? Thank you, Mr. Fermica.
Thank you.
Service Director Strauss.
Yeah, I just have one thing to add, um, just uh, the COVID bug hit us a little bit this week, we had to have two more guys um be on COVID contact, they didn't actually contact, but family members did, so they're gonna be off through the holidays, and I have a few guys on vacation, so we'll be okay as long as it doesn't snow hard, if it snows hard, we're gonna be a little bit of trouble, so, but uh, that's it, then wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Any questions or comments for the service director?
Starting the first of January, right?
Yeah, January third, we have a new employee start, yes, very excited about that, yes, we had to give a two weeks notice, so, and plus, we won't have to pan through the holidays, been a nice clean start at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
You said January fourth, the Monday, or is he starting on a Sunday, January third?
Uh, January fourth, yeah, he'll start on fourth, the first month I have to keep him on days till it gets a little acclimated, and then most likely he'll be on shift after that.
Okay, thank you, any further questions or comments for the service director? Thank you, Mr. Strauss, uh, I believe Building Commissioner Sax on vacation, he's excused. Recreation Director Stop.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, I just wanted to add one uh, one comment, and I wanted to publicly thank Lou Vresol to be, for being involved in our Helping Hand Program, uh, they really hit it out of the park this year, uh, they set up a uh, a virtual store for their their employees, and uh, they really had a a good time buying the presents, sending them to Lou Vresol, Lou Vresol uh wrapped them all up, sent them our way, and then we distributed them uh, through organizations like the city club, uh, they took sixteen families this year, Knights of Columbus took three families, a fire department uh took a, took a family, a Wickl football league. You know, private citizens also participated, so all in all, uh, forty-seven families uh were helped out uh this holiday season, and a hundred and twenty-two kids were helped through this program. So just wanted to publicly thank Lou Vresol for uh their contribution. That's it.
Any questions or comments for the recreation director, Councilman Sakis?
Well, Tim, we're gonna see if my new year starts off on a good note or not, but I'm assuming Winter Fest is not gonna happen this year, huh?
Correct.
That's upsetting, okay, alright, I just, I haven't checked your page and just wanted to uh, I I get it, but
Yeah.
So now I'm bummed, thank you.
Well, we'll get it back.
Alright.
Figure and better.
Any further questions or comments for the recreation director? Thank you, Mr. Stop, I believe the academic development manager is excused as well. Uh, I will now move to open the floor for audience participation, this portion of the meeting is designed for the audience to address the mayor and council, not the directors. Participants will have a five-minute maximum amount of time, would anyone like to address Wickliff City Council? Would anyone like to address Wickliff City Council? If not, I'll mark audience, audience participation closed. Committee reports, the committee of the hall met on December twenty-first at six thirty-two PM, the subject, trucks liquor application for two nine zero 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 Uklad Avenue. Present, Bogo, Garrett Stein, Levon, Sakis, Saloto, excuse, Jaworski, Jaworski Koski, also present, Barbish, Fermica, Zili, and Mr. Roy Dunneken. At six thirty-three, the uh, committee uh had no objections from uh, for audience participation from Mr. Dunneken to present his business plan uh, for his uh, for that building. He stated he had thirty years in a re- in the restaurant and bar business, thirty years' experience, uh, and he currently had, is uh, an owner, operator of two business establishments. Um, Councilwoman Saloto asked him if this was gonna be like a bar and grill, he he said that was, they're gonna be serving bar food. She asked if the the landlord had stated that he would improve the property, uh, Mr. Dunneken stated that the landlord would bring the the place up to code, but once he purchases the property, he will improve uh, improve it. He also asked like, asked for the timeline of the purchase, and he stated that it'd be a one-year lease to own. Councilman Sakis asked about curb appeal, and Mr. Dunneken stated he wants to uh, he wants to improve the curb appeal as as much as possible. Mr. Garrett Stein asked about social media pages for the app, for the uh, the restaurants he currently owns, or the locations he currently owns. Mr. Duncan said that, yes, he has, he he had, they both had one, one was hacked, and and it will be eventually replaced. Mr. Bogo asked about entertainment, whether there'd be any bands or any DJs there, and the, Mr. Dunneken stated that not really, that's not something they usually focus on. Um, the audience participation ended at six forty-five, uh, there was no objections from the committee. The mayor or council president will sign the liquor permit application, this item is reported out of committee, uh, six forty-six PM, respectfully submitted. Are there any commission reports? Seeing no old or new business move on to ordinances?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash fifty-seven amended, an ordinance providing temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Wickliff, Ohio for the period beginning January first, two thousand twenty-one, and ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sakis, seconded by Councilman Bogo to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand twenty dash fifty-seven on third and final reading, discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Your Hardstein?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sakis, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty dash fifty-seven as presented, discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Your Hardstein?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Sakis?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty dash sixty-eight, an ordinance authorizing the director of finance of the city of Wickliff, Ohio to advance the sum of money from the general fund to the sewer fund, declaring an emergency.
Suspension.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Saloto, seconded by Councilman Sakis to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance two thousand twenty to sixty-eight on third and final reading, discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Your Hardstein?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Back is?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Adoption.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Saloto, seconded by Councilman Sakis to adopt ordinance two thousand twenty to sixty-eight as presented, discussion? Uh, finance director Dolez, how long do you think this hundred and fifty thousand dollars will last us in this, in this uh, transfer?
Well, right now, um, that's in addition to the hundred thousand dollars that we advanced uh earlier in the year. Um, I'm hoping that we won't have to advance anymore next year with our increases and that we can start paying this back, but um, it depends on how the maintenance and the infiltration, and if we get a lot of wet, a lot of rain like we did that one month, that doubled the bill, so um, it it's really hard to tell, but I am hoping that this advance that we will have to do.
Okay, I understand, it's it's got a lot of variables, I was just curious if you had an offhand number, like you, you think it'll last three, three to four months or something like that, or you think it hopefully will last the entire year?
Um, I'm hoping the entire year, uh, we can, you know, have the the fund go negative during the year as long as we write it at the end of the year, which is what we're doing now. Um, and like I said, hopefully this, we won't have to do this again, but it's it's possible we could be here next year, you know, doing another advance.
Thank you very much, any further questions or comments, or does any further discussion on the uh, adoption? Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Your Hardstein?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Back is?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Uh, resolutions, seeing none, other legislation? Miscellaneous? Reminder, uh, January fourth is organizational meeting for council. Everybody have a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas. Um, entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Sakis, seconded by Councilwoman Saloto to adjourn the meeting, discussion? Sandy, please call the roll.
Bogo?
Yes.
Your Hardstein?
Yes.
Levon?
Yes.
Back is?
Yes.
Saloto?
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you, guys.
Happy holidays, guys.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, everyone.
You all in January.
Happy Christmas, Happy New Year.